I'd like to call to order the Council Committee, the whole meeting for February 7, 2018. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay. Subcommittee reports. Infrastructure. Vice President.
So that should be complete. Is it complete yet, or just about?
It will be completed in the spring, in the terms of the project, yes.
And the Cedar Bureau Engineers are designing landscaping. Bridge at Riverfront Park is going well, able to perform some stability to the embankment. Final results of back from Pollock Park, found contaminants, will do in-depth study. Minister Plan wrapping up and are starting a study. Licensing inspection, second cycle of the biannual rentals. Some outstanding units not registered, property transfers up. Doing economic development with pay possible business coming to town. There's a strong effort by paid and Pottstowners and outside are looking for purchase and lease, or lease of space for businesses. Public Works closed loops making good progress. Charlotte up to Mervine, 100 and High Street, Berks yet, Armham and Boulevard yet, close to finish. And I guess our sewer issues and water issues are kind of calmed down now as far as broken piping and once everything starts falling out, it'll probably come back. And that's my report.
Thank you. Economic Development.
All right. I'm happy to report that the Borough has received a $200,000 community development block grant for the replacement of the Ricketts Center roof and the HVAC work that needs to take place there. This is in an effort to improve the quality of service available to Ricketts Center and community members. An update on the early intervention program grant. We are currently targeting a completion of a draft for the grant in about two weeks. Once we have the draft, we will then send it out to the Financial Sustainability Oversight Committee for their review before we submit it to DCED. If you remember, this is an update to the Phase One EIP study that looked at the financial sustainability of the Borough and how we can be more efficient. So we'll be taking another deeper look at that in the next six to 12 months here. We are also preparing a Monco 2040 grant to fund a walk bike connection to the School for River Trail, which we think meshes quite nicely since it's a county grant that would connect to a county project. We feel that we should have a pretty good shot at getting some additional funding for walk bike for that project. And then also, I just wanted to mention that the keep plan down on Industrial Boulevard, which has been long in the making, they're coming to a point where it's close to being finalized. And they've established principles for development that are more market-driven, that have design standards to ensure high-quality development in that area. They're going to be presenting on the draft plan to Pottstown on Monday, and then next Wednesday, they're going to go to West Pots Grove to present the plan there to get their comments and feedback. And at some point in the spring, they'll be looking for endorsement of the plan by both municipalities. And then at that point, the roadmap will be set to seek grant funding for any public improvements that might take place in that area. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Transportation. Vice President.
No meeting.
No meeting. Olivet Boys and Girls Club. Counselor Kirkland.
Is there a report in the package?
No. Okay. Pottstown School Board Member, Mr. Heidel. Is he here? Anyone from the school? All right. Library, Mr. Green. No Mr. Green. Ad-hoc zoning. Counselor Prosser. No meeting. Animal Committee. Counselor Kirkland.
No action in the report.
Safety. Chief Drumhead.
Safety committee didn't meet. But I will report one thing, that our citizens were very well behaved for the Eagles victory. We had very few incidents, a little bit of fireworks, which we had to deal with. Crowds were doing a lot of hooting and hollering. Most of the calls that came in that were fireworks were payment and shots fired, so that's a little numbing, but one cute incident, we had one guy run downtown in his boxers, grump, and try and climb one of the light poles that he didn't make.
Was it greased?
No, we didn't grease anything. Thank you.
Ah, thank you. Okay. Emergency Services.
Good evening, Council. Most of you know me, Miles Feather, Vice President of Philly's Fire Company. Our monthly report. Training this month covered truck checks, knowing where the equipment is, search and rescue, ladder operations with search and rescue, and hose line advancement for 53 man-hours this month. The station has been very busy. I don't have all the details on it. I didn't get a chance to talk with the chief. Fundraising. We have our annual beef and beer coming up. That helps supply monies for things that we need, that we just don't have in our budget. And that's going to be at the Norco Fire Company on April 28th, from 6:00 to 10:00. It's $25, and it'll be food, beverage, raffles, and a lot of fun. We do very well with that. We will be having our annual Easter flower sale, starting March 29th, Thursday, running through Easter Sunday till we run out. And we've come up with a new one. It's the Phillies 5K Run, June 2nd, Riverfront Park. Anybody wants to come out and run? It's a run-walk, so if you are interested, details will follow. The explorers this month have been, again, they've been piggybacked on with the seniors, and they're part of that 53 man-hours, and they're learning the trucks more and more, and we're putting more and more on them. In-house, our annual firefighters appreciation night will be held on Saturday, this next Saturday, the 17th. Appreciation for all our active firefighters, their spouses, and significant others. And that's a dinner that we take them to, and we give them little awards and prizes and stuff like that. In the community, the Polar Bear Plunge on Saturday, the 17th, at Riverfront Park at 8:00 AM. We'll be down there to stand by with the bonfire, because we got to dry them out and warm them up. The other thing is the Community Mixer at 107, 107 High Street, on the 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00. We are their featured organization this month. We'll have live music by Roger Harris, food by Mike's Brick Oven, and raffles, and it's a donation of $10 at the door. That's all I have.
Very good. Chief Lusar.
Good evening, Counselors. I just wanted to touch, I did send everybody the annual report for 2017. I hope that you had an opportunity to read it. I would like to point out one error. I had flip-flopped the numbers for our debt services, for our fire department operations. Our debt services is not over a million dollars. It's only $150,000. So there's an error there. But for January, the fire department responded to 107 calls. And I looked in our history back to 2014, prior to January, our busiest month, we only ran 97. So this was a busy month for us. And our busiest firefighter, our most active volunteer firefighter responded to 39 of those. So we had to have a share amongst all the others to accommodate all of that. So I do rely heavily on our volunteers, as well as the fire companies that have provided the career staff. Because I had 107 calls, and like I said, my most active volunteer only responded to 38 of them. So I do have, this coming year, we're going to be taking a hard look at the fire department, both internally and with the third-party that you guys are bringing in. He's also going to look at us as from the outside, which is great, because I need to start bringing our fire department in the direction for the next five, 10, or 20 years. And to do that, I'm going to continue to need Council's support, and I hope that you guys are there supporting us still. I know you support us now, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Human Relations, will not be here tonight. Ad hoc Financial Sustainability Oversight Committee. Counselor Kirkland.
Yes. I'm going to have Janice go over the letter of recommendation and some general points. But before she does do that, I want to, I just want to say that I just wanted to thank everyone who participated, you know, and served on the committee. We all worked very well together. It was an open and honest discussion on our financial situation of the Borough. Everybody came up with some great ideas, some great recommendations. And, you know, we felt that no stone was left unturned. You know, we looked at everything that was out there, but with a lot of the situations, just it wasn't enough time. There wasn't enough time to implement some of the ideas that we had. So we are planning on implementing some of the ideas during this year, maybe for the budget for next year. But, you know, she'll go over some of that. But I just wanted to thank everybody and tell everybody that, you know, we did a good job. So with that.
Okay. So we presented a letter to the Council. I'm not going to read it verbatim. I'm just going to give you the highlights. So these are the recommendations resulting from three meetings that we had. To open the 2018 adopted budget, it would have to be done prior to February 15. There wasn't enough time, so the committee focused on gaining efficiencies in the general fund, since this is the place for the biggest deficit. And it became apparent, as details of these ideas were flushed out, that immediate changes that could significantly impact the general fund, we have a couple of them. There's feedback provided by the Borough's financial advisor finds that a possible, oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm going to recap. There were many constructive ideas deliberated. However, it became apparent, as details of these ideas were flushed out, that if any immediate changes that could significantly impact the general fund, there wasn't enough time. So we reviewed some recommendations. I was getting ahead of myself. Our first recommendation is that we maintain the 12% increase as adopted in the 2018 budget. And while any direct savings realized from the implementation of short-term recommendations, these would offset the depleted state of the general fund reserves, which needs to be built up. So this decision was made after careful consideration of the following factors. We were contacted by our financial advisors and informed that the Borough's bond rating could be at a risk if we don't keep our finances up to the par. Also, we need reserves in the near future to reestablish contributions to the capital fund, which has a deficit of approximately 1.0 million. And the Borough is obligated to the contractual requirements as part of the collective bargaining agreement, and it was not realistic to be able to change any of these before the deadline. So going forward, the committee resolved to continue to work with staff to implement short and long-term recommendations. So here are the short-term, we think, one to six months. The first one is continue our committee meetings on the third Monday of each month, starting March 19th at 4:00 PM, and remain involved as the EIP study moves forward. We're going to thoroughly review all the costs of services provided by an employee and adjust the fee schedules accordingly. And the third and final of the short-term was to eliminate the Wednesday night hours, the 4:00 to 7:00 PM, to reduce the overtime payouts, as well as the Borough hall heating and electric costs. Two others were to create a utilities inspector position instead of contracting with a consultant for the sewer water main capital project inspections. This would save approximately 100,000 to 200,000 in the authority budget, which will help to keep the water and sewer rates steady. The position would also provide an opportunity for the employee to cross-train with the Public Works in preparation of eventual succession as employees in this department and retire. And the EIP study will remain a, will retain a consultant with expertise particularly in emergency service operations. Then we have two long-term goals for six to 24 months. And that would be to thoroughly review the existing and future CBA contracts and their impacts on the Borough's financial stability, include the finance director and a council member in the CBA negotiations, and move toward a cashless system for the tax and utility payments, which allow for a future reduction in workforce as employees retire at cashier window positions. So the committee ends the memo as we appreciate the opportunity to contribute concrete plans toward the benefit of the financial health of the Borough, and we look forward to continued collaboration going forward. And it's signed by the members of the Financial Sustainability Oversight Committee.
Anything else? No. I do want to thank everybody involved. It was not easy. And the one thing we did learn, other than the opportunities we have before us to do better, is that in the past, apparently, staff and the finance committee was doing a very good job. There was no more low-hanging fruit to be picked, nothing easy. It was a tough assignment for three weeks, but everyone who attended, they were open, they were honest. They put as much as they could on the table for us to consider, and I'd like to thank all seven of them. We will meet again in March, and will continue these efforts in conjunction with the EIP. So, thank you, Joe. Good job.
Is this memo going to be available? Because I know Evan wants to read it thoroughly.
Sure. We can make that memo available.
Great. Okay. How about the Mayor's Report? What's been happening?
So Art Fusion had amazing soup bowl fundraiser, and I have to give props to everyone who donated and made soup for that event. I have a wonderful bowl, and I think they were able to raise a lot of money. You can go on their website to get the recipes, and I think I saw a lot of counsel there, so thank you. Pottstown Community Action Met last night. They are still working on the T-shirt contest for their new shirts for the Rock the Block this year. So you can go on their website or on Facebook and vote for your favorite T-shirt design. We're also working on putting together projects for the coming months. 107 had a fundraiser for Steel River, which they were able to meet their goal, which was pretty amazing. My Rotary Club, Pottstown Rotary Club, has partnered with Tom Hilton to support the 100 Tree Project that we're putting in behind the high school. So it was a busy month, despite the cold. And go Eagles! Upcoming Friday, February 9th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. CADCOM and Genesis Housing Corporation have partnered for free tax preparation for families with incomes under $54,000 annually. It's going to be in a big BB and T bus at 159 East High Street. And that, again, that's Friday from 9:00 to 2:00. Saturday, February 24th, at 10:00 AM, in the Hobarts Run neighborhood, there's a home-buying seminar for free, teaching people about mortgages and what goes into buying a home. Sunday, February 25th, from 9:00 to noon, Habitat for Humanity is doing a DIY home repair workshop at Art Fusion, and they're going to be focusing on drywall and painting projects. There's limited space, so go on Habitat's website to sign up if you're interested. Also, the Monco Happening List is circulating, and voting has begun. I think it's ending soon, right, Sheila?
Yeah.
I think we have 16, we have 16 businesses on the Monco Happening List.
There are nine in downtown specific area, and I know there's about four outside, but I may have missed some, so.
Sorry. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
That's all right.
So go and vote. There's lilies, grumpies, there's a ton of businesses in Pottstown, so let's try to get those numbers up so we can get on that list. Habitat is also doing a critical home repair program, so applications are due at the end of the month. I think they're closing the submissions, so if you're interested and you need critical home repair, please submit your application. Go on their website to get that application, or you can go on my Facebook page. And, sorry, one more thing. Oh, the Climate March for Pottstown is coming up, April 29th. It's going to be starting at 2:00. More information to come. And, one more thing. I didn't know this. I was surprised to hear this. The Olivet Boys and Girls Club has, from 2:30 to 8:00, Monday through Friday, they have programs for youth, homework help, sports activities, arts and crafts, and I guess they also feed the kids. And the cost is $15 for the year. So if you need somebody, somewhere for your children to go, to work on homework, and have mentors while you are at, until you get home from work, again, it's from, I'm sorry, did I say, yeah, 2:30 to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and that's $15 for the whole year. All of these things can be found on my website, or I'm sorry, Facebook page, which is Stephanie Henrik, Pottstown Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. About our managers here.
Sure. Just one housekeeping item tonight. I'd like to remind all the presenters to try to keep your presentations to five or 10 minutes. We have a lot on the agenda tonight. Switching gears, update on Pollock Park. We had a public meeting last week, and where the results of the Phase Two Environmental Assessment were released. We've also applied for a targeted brownfield assessment grant for Pollock Park, which is currently being reviewed by the EPA. So, you know, this is different from the Phase Two, where Phase Two is looking at kind of what's in the soil and approximately where are the locations of these contaminants. The targeted brownfield assessment is really a site characterization study to identify exact locations of all contaminants in preparation for future remediation. That will allow us to know exactly what we need to do to remediate that site, and then target the appropriate funding mechanisms in order to get that work completed. So we're currently setting up a meeting with DEP. As I understand, they have a myriad of grant opportunities available for brownfields, I think, brownfields to playgrounds, one of their programs that we will be targeting. So we continue to make efforts to get that site back online. It's going to be a long process, and we appreciate your patience, but we'll keep working. And then as part of the cost-saving and efficiency efforts, as we mentioned, Wednesday night hours from 4:00 to 7:00 PM will no longer be offered, starting on March 7th, 2018. Notices will be sent out on utility bills in the Park and Recreation Newsletter, and also posted on the website and electronic message boards. Another part of the efficiency efforts is our new Parks and Recreation Borough Newsletter. This will be going to an electronic format after April. Will be, I think, one more printed version in April. And then after that, there won't be any more mailed copies, so everything will go out electronically, or you can find it on our website or Facebook page and download it for free. And one last note, registration is now open for the spring session of the Citizens Leadership Academy, which begins on Tuesday, March 13th. That concludes my report.
Wonderful. Thank you. Now we have a presentation about the Veterans Island Project. Kathy Peretti.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for the Veterans Island Project at Memorial Park. And what the Veterans Island Project is, is we're just a very, very small group of people who are trying to help to enhance, maintain, and maybe even in the years to come, develop the island at Memorial Park, which, and keep it dedicated to our veterans and maybe our first responders and law enforcement. Through the efforts of our Community Day, and with the help of the Elks Veterans Committee and Pottstown Hospital, we were able to raise enough funds to replace the lights at the World War II Memorial. And this is part of what our mission will be. We are working very closely with Mike at Parks and Rec to help us identify projects that need help, repairs, or in ways that we can enhance. Hopefully, down the line, we'll be able to have a very large, pretty picture. We're hoping that the Veterans Island will enhance the tourism aspects of the park as the railroad moves in, and we have the carousel and the college gallery and everything. So with the help of those two organizations, we've raised the money, and we've also garnered help from the Pottstown Rotary, Kiwanis Club, and Lions Club, that they're willing to pitch in with, right now, with a lot of labor help to maybe organize a cleanup day before Memorial Day, when some of the events start to happen down there. That will be geared towards our veterans. So here's the check, and I'm hoping that the lights will be installed this spring?
This spring, yeah.
This spring, so we can keep the light on the flag. And we'll be working more, maybe with some landscaping, or some repairs to the monument, and hopefully move on to the bandstand, and so on and so on, so.
Well, thank you very much.
If anyone would want to know more about what we're doing and how we're trying to progress with this, you can contact me on my Facebook page or the Veterans Island Project Facebook page. Thank you.
Okay. Number seven. We have a presentation from the Reading Gravity Racing Group.
Thank you, Council, for inviting my organization to meet with you today. My name is John King from the Reading Gravity Racing League. It is a form of soapbox- Anyway, the club was disbanded in nineteen seventy-four due to expansion and a place to have our races. We used to race on Thirteenth Street in Reading, which is in the Muhlenberg Township, and when they put in the post office and the college put in dorms, we had no place to go after that. So, we moved up in back of the Penn Tower. There was an abandoned road back there, and we raced there up until nineteen seventy-six, and the road was in such disrepair that we had to stop, and people were dumping trash. So, I made a project to raise money to have a permanent course for us to race on Spewler Lane, that's the name of the road, in back of Penn Tower. We do have a track that we're racing on now, Oak Lane in Reading, and we're looking to expand our club into other communities. So I did apply to have a event here in Pottstown on Wilson Street. I was advised by Mr. Ram Hecker, yes, excuse me, everybody knows Ram. Ram is also a customer of mine, so when you see him in those crazy suits, he got them for me. I own Sharp Dress Man Clothing Store in Reading also, so, but I also do business stuff too. But I devoted my time to this project to get more kids involved, and dads, and moms, and sisters, and brothers, you know, that's how we used to do it. I just want to pass that over. That's from nineteen sixty-seven, I believe, those pictures in there. So anyway, we want to have an event in July here, and I think it would be a great event, something maybe the community can get involved with. If you look through Gravity Racing on YouTube, you see a lot of cities getting involved with it at least once a year to have some sort of event. And it's a lot of fun, and it creates a good community skills with the kids raising money to get their racers built. We have also a sponsorship program, so they can go out with their book, that's a sponsorship book there, that they can go out and ask companies to give them money to build their cars and stuff like that. So anyway, we're having our fundraising event March thirty-first, and this is, so far we raised almost seven thousand dollars for this project on Oak Lane. So we want to have a permanent track to race on, but we want to get more people involved. Right now, we have twenty-two cars that were built. The average cost is around four hundred dollars to build these cars. We don't race like the Soapbox of America, two-by-two, we actually race like NASCAR, two-by, you know, two lanes, multiple cars, five at a time at the most. I would like to present a video, but I don't know how to work that thing, but if you go on YouTube and look this up, Reading Gravity Racing League, you can check out all the action on Facebook. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Any questions, Council?
What's the average speed of one of those cars?
Well, our last race, we had on Skyline Drive, and one of our racers hit fifty mile an hour. And when we competed, the average speed was around thirty-five. So, yeah. And we have brakes, safety harnesses, it's professionally set up. We also have a ambulance, stuff like that, and we have insurance, and we have some sponsors that give us money to ensure the fans that come out, and we have an average of about a hundred people that come to see the event. So our racing schedule starts in May, and we run through September, and we would like to have a race here in Pottstown in July, I think July fifth.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, well, how about from Pedita? Sheila?
Just wanted to really quickly update you on the farm plans for this year. You know that we did receive our fifteen thousand dollar grant from Health and Wellness. We've decided that this year, we need to really focus on bringing more vendors in and bringing in more people to the farm market. So, one of the things we're going to do is we're going down to two days a month, we're going to do the second and the fourth of each month. We are gathering, hopefully with everyone's okay, under the clock tower, so we mapped that out. We can afford about thirty vendors right there. We could further go further down the street, as we did last year, but we're trying to keep everyone a little bit more close-knit and closer together for it. Plans for the second week of each month, we'll have guest speakers, chefs, educational programs, and on the fourth, we'll have more of our events, Christmas and July, Family Day. We do want to have a food truck, which again, we have to kind of coordinate that a little bit before we get that forward. And then on June twenty-eighth, that week, we're going to have the five K, five K run to the market, which we will bring the farmer's market down along the riverfront, and we've been in conversation with Monco and the Borough and Parks and Rec about that. So, in keeping with our mission, which is to bring a nightlife into town, we hope that between the vault and the pub opening, as well as our other seven businesses right there along the Charlotte Street corridor, or five businesses, that we'll be able to start boosting more people coming down to the market and supporting it. So, there is a map there, very, not to scale, so you can look at that. And then I think Bill wanted to talk about the Vegan Fest as well.
Sheila, can I?
You're in here, you're on the same line.
Can I ask a question quick, Sheila? So, I, looking at this, I think it's great to try to put everything at the clock tower. I'm just wondering if maybe, what is that, the shop and park lot? A lot of farmer's markets that I've been to, they use the parking lot for the spaces, and, you know, maybe that's something to consider in the future?
As it grows, it definitely will become a situation that we'd like to reevaluate with it, with our space on it. At this time, we've had twenty-five vendors to date. The goal of doing it the second and fourth is that we bring them all together, instead of some weeks, we have all the vendors, and some weeks, we have half the vendors because the artisans aren't there. So, in doing this twice a month, it, we're hoping that that will facilitate that.
Yeah, Sheila and I actually looked at using part of the parking lot there, as you're suggesting. There's a couple vehicle circulation challenges that we run into in that parking lot. First of all, it's a one-way circulation through there, so you can't really block any portion of it off without blocking the whole thing off, because otherwise, you wouldn't be able to get out. And there's angle parking, which kind of reinforces that fact, because you're only one that you can get in and out. So, we'd really have to look at the configure, the vehicle configuration there, if we were to do something like that.
All right. And with our goal of growing it, you know, that would be a great problem to have. We did speak to Adam as well. I did speak to the businesses up there when we first were considering that, and everyone was on board. When I realized Adam would be open probably at that point, in talking to him, he had a few more concerns. He wasn't saying no, he wasn't saying yes, but at this point, I think we're good under the clock tower, and we'll work on that in the future as the farm grows.
Okay. Down to pets.
Caitlin, Caitlin Orser and I are going to be talking, giving you an update on pets and food. September the fifteenth is the eighth annual Pottstown Pet Fair. It has turned out to be one of the largest pre-admitted pet fairs in the state. Last year, fire police estimated about three thousand people attended, and I had like seventy-five vendors registered, and not just cat and dogs, marine rescue, marine life, how to attract butterflies and birds to your yard, the whole realm of animals. And I'm already up to probably close to ten reservations for this year. May not seem like a lot, but the event isn't till September, and we have our new Facebook page up and running, Pottstown Pet Fair, which is getting a lot of attention, a lot of attraction. And what is very interesting, a lot of the vendors are coming from way outside the area, New Jersey, Delaware, New York, to come to Pottstown for a pet event for six hours. And last year, I had so many people wave MapQuest in front of me, is this how I get to Route a Hundred, and they were very impressed with Pottstown, which, you know, kind of like took me by surprise, is we take a lot of things for granted, but they were impressed with the carousel, the mini golf. They live in Montgomery County, never been to Pottstown, this is their first time in Pottstown, so it's something that has really escalated. And then outs, coming with that is the Vegan Fest, or Eagle Fest, which I'll let Caitlin talk about. We do have one little fly in the ointment with that. Sheila just brought to my attention that the date we have picked in May is the same date there's another big food fest going on, so we may have to tweak the date, but we just want to give you an update of what's going on. I've run everything through the Chief of Police, the Fire Marshal, pulling all the permits that we need to get. Mike from Parks and Rec is on board with this. We've coordinated this with Sheila, so we have a whole group of people on board with this. And with that, I'll let.
So we're going to call it Eco Fest, and it's being run by Mobilization for Animals. If you want to check them out, it's mobilizationforanimals.org. And we want to showcase mostly the businesses, obviously in Pottstown, that have any vegan food options, or any environmentally friendly services, or products, or vegan products. And it would be the first one for this town, any kind of veg fest. And I know Phoenixville, and Boyertown, and Collegeville, they all have like a vegan presence. There are places that you, as a vegan, you know to go and go eat and go get different things at stores. And Pottstown hasn't really showcased that yet. We're starting to have a couple places, so I think it'd be great to bring that to awareness. And then we'd also have some organizations come in for educational purposes, and have some animal rescue, things, just kind of cover all those topics.
So we've got two great events planned this year in Pottstown, and I figured between the two of them, we're going to be bringing in about five thousand people. And Carol will be in our ward, the Vegan Fest hopefully will be out here at the park, and then the Pet Fair will be down at Mount Antony Park, Memorial Park. And like I said, that has fully grown, and we're hoping the same thing with the Vegan Fest, Eco Fest, that that will grow, continue, and bring more people into Pottstown.
And also that the Eco Fest could bring some awareness to also for the farmer's market.
So we're all collaborating, all together on this.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief LaSara will tell us about the Fire Protection Ordinance Amendment.
Excuse me one second, let me pull this up. She's going to keep me on task. All right, so what I want to talk to you about is, it's not on the screen. There it is. There we go, it's there. These are proposed changes, all right? So, what I'm looking at here is, the national standard for voluntary fire departments, I got to have fifteen firefighters on location in nine minutes, all right? Right now, I'm guaranteed four. We have four career firefighters out there, I can get about four more that are around during the day. Once I get on location and say, yes, this is truly a fire, I can get another ten, but it's about another eight to ten minutes later, all right? So I'm not really meeting that standard. So we're having, I can tell you, when I do have a fire, when the fire's all done, I got about forty guys there, but they didn't all arrive in the first five minutes or the first ten minutes. But they are showing up to help, which is great, because sometimes the fires can take forty-five minutes or longer. So, the key to reducing injuries at fires and sustaining our infrastructure or our buildings is early notification of a fire and early suppression, okay? So what I'm proposing, what I want to remind you is, the state's building code and our adopted fire code is the bare minimum for safety in a building, is the bare minimum, which the state has allowed us the opportunity to make changes, as long as they approve, and once they approve, then Council has to approve. So, all I'm trying to do is just increase the bare minimum here, all right? So, one of the things is, under the fire code, every fire protection system has to give a report to the Fire Marshal, all right? That's not happening right now, and a lot of times, it's through paper. So one of the things is, we're looking at an outside vendor to use a third-party reporting system that has zero-dollar costs to the borough, okay? So that's one of the things, that's going to help us, because when the vendor reports on the fire protection system, if there's a failure in the system, as soon as I log on the system, it tells me right away where the business is in town that has a failure in their fire protection system, so that we can address it immediately, okay? The other thing that I'm looking at is fire alarms. Fire alarms give us the early notification, okay? Right now, if somebody were to get a fire alarm, I don't know if it's going to call us. That's really the case right now, because it's the bare minimum. So what we're looking at is, we're getting listed central station monitoring, means that it, they're held to a very high standard, okay? Which means that the fire alarm installers have to be listed, which is going to hold them to a higher standard. And the other thing that we're looking at is, we're looking at requiring complete coverage, because under the current, we're looking at a minimum, is just a pole station in the corner. Okay, now I'm looking, I want smoke detectors in a facility, okay, because early notifications creep. Sprinkler system, I want to make some changes to the sprinkler system. Right now, a B business, all right, a business that just has offices, is not required to have a sprinkler system unless it puts five hundred people in it. So as I start to get businesses that are going up, there's no sprinkler coverage. My ladder trucks are only going to reach the fourth floor, maybe the fifth, all right? So, I'm trying to get coverage there. And one of that is, if the area is greater than thirty feet above where the fire department access is, then you've got a sprinkler. So the other thing is, I want to look at is changing it from twelve thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet. What that means is, any new business coming into town, if they're twelve thousand square feet or greater, they have to sprinkler it. All I'm saying is, we want to go ten thousand square feet, okay? That's, and this is a reduction of two thousand square feet, where you go to other municipalities in Montgomery County, they get five thousand square feet, that you've got a sprinkler. Okay? So, the biggest areas of impact is going to be new construction. I want to emphasize, new construction. It's not going to affect any current businesses that are operating, okay? And a change of use. So obviously, if I have the dentist office that now becomes the nightclub, that's a change of use, it's going to prompt them into putting in a sprinkler and a fire alarm, because we're going to have a higher risk in that facility. So, again, the most important thing is, no new businesses, or rather, no current existing businesses are going to be impacted, all right? This was a sign that we found, okay? A storm came through, knocked out the fire alarm. This was the sign, and this was on the building for days, okay? That if you hear the alarm, you've got to call nine-one-one, instead of the alarm calling us. To me, this is just unacceptable, okay? So, under the current requirement, I would have to find the sign. There is no obligation for the building, the alarm company, to call me and say, hey, the fire alarm doesn't work, right? Under the new changes, it's, they have to notify us as soon as the fire alarm is not in service for eight hours, okay? And if we do find a problem, they have four hours to begin the process of repairing it, not wait weeks or days to fix it. So we're trying to improve upon the basics, or the minimums. So, again, this only impacts current, or new construction or a change of use, stronger fire alarm installation. To me, this is just unacceptable, okay? So under the current requirement, I would have to find the sign. There is no obligation for the building, the alarm company, to call me and say, hey, the fire alarm doesn't work, right? Under the new changes, it's, they have to notify us as soon as the fire alarm is not in service for eight hours, okay? And if we do find a problem, they have four hours to begin the process of repairing it, not wait weeks or days to fix it. So we're trying to improve upon the basics, or the minimums. So again, this only impacts current, or new construction or a change of use, stronger fire alarm installation requirements, and stronger requirements for sprinkler systems. Because if we can prevent the fire, we can protect our infrastructure, which is going to mean that the businesses and the buildings are around a lot longer. So where we're at is, we have, the proposed ordinance that you're looking at, that is actually at the state. We have to get permission from the state, because this is a construction document that we're changing. The state determines the level of construction. If the state approves it, then we get it back, and then we can present it to you, and where you have the opportunity to vote or make changes to it. But that's where we're at right now.
One comment I have, or question, is how many businesses or buildings in town will this, the sprinkler installation, I think is the one that's most worrisome to me, because that's going to cost a lot of money for somebody coming in here.
I'm listening, I'm just doing something.
So my question is, how many businesses or buildings in the borough will be impacted by this ordinance? If somebody comes in and decides, I want to turn this building into a nightclub?
Well, that's an answer I can't give you, because I don't know how many people are coming to town to say, I want to take a non-assembly and turn it into an assembly, okay? But that is a change of use that would require it, because we're going to have a greater impact with greater risk for life. A lot of these changes that are in the fire code now are the result of a station nightclub fire out of Rhode Island, where they killed a hundred people. So under the current code, is if you can put more than a hundred people in an assembly, you have to sprinkler it, all right? And I'm not changing that requirement, I'm just changing the size of the space.
But what I'm saying is, if I understood this presentation, if the building is ten thousand square feet, regardless of use, it needs a sprinkler system?
Yes.
Okay.
For new construction or a change of use. So if there's already a business, and they're at eleven thousand square feet, and they're not sprinklers, they don't have to sprinkler it. It's just for new construction. And I'm not trying to deflect what you said, but I can't give you the answer of how many businesses are coming to town, and they want to take a different space and change it to something else. Did I answer your question? We'll talk more. I'd be happy to talk more.
Do other municipalities have the same type of...
They have, some of them around us, like immediately the townships around us, they don't have as strong code enforcement as like we do. So they're living on the state minimum, but they also don't have the same fire protection that we have. They have less. Some of the larger boroughs, like I spoke today with the Fire Marshal from Norristown. He is actually interested in putting these in place, he just wasn't aware of the process. And after a conversation with them, of how we did it, they are going to investigate that further. You go to some of the other larger municipalities, for instance, Reading, Wyomissing, they have these in place already.
So how does this impact a new business? Not that I'm saying that this is important. Sprinkler systems are important, but how is that going to impact a business coming into town that, say, wants to open a retail store, or a nightclub, like you said, as far as cost?
I can tell you, I've been to several of the vacant stock that we have in town, and I would say that at least half of them are already sprinklers, or have some type of fire alarm in them, it's just they would need to be brought up further to go. So there is going to be an impact right away, when they go into one of those spaces. I know I went up to get a piece of paper, but what I wanted to tell you is, and I have a copy for each one of the calendars, you talk about the cost of sprinklers. In two thousand seventeen, Congress passed a tax law that now businesses can recoup one hundred percent of the cost of a sprinkler system over the course of the few years. So they're able to deduct that as a tax expense for sprinkler systems. So there's the outlay upfront, but they're going to recoup it in their taxes. Back to your question, the, like I said, a lot of the vacant stock has some type of this in there, and there are some that don't, and they would have to. But it's really going to be dependent upon what they want to put in there, and what's the size of the space.
As far as, say rentals, like leased buildings and things like that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry. Leased buildings, the business wants to go and lease a building, and they would have to provide that, or?
Well, that would be an agreement between the building owner and the tenant regarding the tenant fit out, who's going to pay for the cost of that, but as far as the lease, the leasing, that would be an agreement between them, who's covering that cost. And again, like I said, for sprinkler systems, retrofitting and installing new is all tax, is now tax deductible, and it's, Congress wrote it as a law, it doesn't expire.
I understand now that existing businesses would not be affected.
That's correct. Yeah, I'm not, I can't target existing buildings, nor would I want to, they're already here, and they're operating.
So if they're here and they're operating, whatever they have is okay?
Yes, sir. And when we get the response back from the state, because the state can say, you are allowed to do this, but you're not allowed to do that. And once I get that back, we can talk further, and I would be more than happy to sit down with each or every one of you, and discuss it in more detail.
Very good.
Would it be to a building owner's advantage, if he was to know about this, say, the sprinkler system that you can put in, and you have like a tax advantage with that? I mean, would it be something that, you know?
There are national sprinkler organizations that are pushing this, that are pushing this information out to say, look, install sprinkler system is now taxed, as well as a lot of the sprinkler contractors. Obviously, the sprinkler contractors are looking to make the money from doing the labor. But again, the insurance industry, when the building is sprinkled, there is a reduction in the insurance, as well as when the building has a fire alarm. To what extent, I'm not an insurance agent, I can't answer that.
And you can make that information available with paid?
I have already invited this tax sheet to pay.
Wonderful.
And I will be happy to sit down with Peggy Lee, and go over some other things as well.
Great. Week two, you hear from Harrisburg.
Thank you.
Thanks. Bark for Life, beer garden on April twenty-eighth. Anybody?
So council understands, they're requesting the use of a beer garden at the Bark for Life event. Beer garden on Farrow property does require approval from council.
Right. So we'll list that for Monday. Conditional use, Pottstown's own meat market.
Council recalls, last month, we had a conditional use hearing for the property at fifty-five East High Street. The applicant presented information that they wanted to basically operate a neighborhood convenience store. Property had previously been utilized in that fashion. We held the hearing, I believe the applicant did satisfy the items set forth in our ordinance. A neighborhood convenience store is a conditional use, it's not anything that's buried from the provisions of our ordinance. I would suggest, if council's inclined to grant the request, that conditions be imposed. Those conditions would mirror what we have in the ordinance, indicating that the hours of operation would be from nine AM to six PM. The applicant also indicated that they would make best efforts to obviously post the store, so there would be no loitering, and make best efforts to enforce that signage that's there. Obviously, they'd have to get any other permits they would need in order to operate the establishment. So you're under the clock to make some kind of decision on this. So we'll list it for Monday, and I think in your packet is a proposed order for your review. And if there's any questions or discussions, we can talk about it now. This is a matter of judicial deliberation, so if there was the desire to talk about it in an executive session, you're permitted to do that. So it's your call. If you think you need that, that's fine. If not, it'll be listed for Monday.
Hearing, no discussion, we'll keep it listed. All right, twelve is Wendy's subdivision plan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Wean. This is also a matter we had discussed at the last council meeting. We were still in the process of attempting to get more information for council, and therefore we removed it from last month's agenda. Since that time, over the last thirty days, through efforts of Justin, we were able to get additional information. First, the applicant, which is Wendy's, which is seeking this minor subdivision, has committed to increase their payment of fee in lieu of from fifteen thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. That offer is basically up to council, meaning that you can use the money to install a sidewalk or a pathway as you choose, and if that can't be installed, you would have the discretion to spend the money any way you want it. The applicant has made clear that since they don't own the property where the sidewalk will be installed, is they're not interested in getting involved in the logistics of that. Justin has met with the owners of the Pottstown Center. They have at least verbally consented that they would permit a sidewalk or pathway to be constructed on their property. So that's a positive sign. We didn't know that last month. Obviously, we're not certain at this point whether twenty thousand dollars is sufficient to cover the costs. We do believe that there are some issues with extending the sidewalk into the Penn Dot right-of-way. That may require some permitting or additional investigation. We're not certain of the cost at this point. But at least, it looks like we're getting more information with respect to what we can do up there. We are under a deadline, we have to take action on this minor subdivision plan. The applicant certainly has proceeded in good faith in making an offer to contribute to the sidewalk. So happy to answer any questions. If Justin wants to add anything concerning his meeting with the owners of Pottstown Center, I think this matter needs to be listed for some type of council action for Monday night on the minor subdivision, and at least we'll be able to keep our options open with respect to the sidewalk moving forward, so.
Okay. Have you anything to add?
No, I mean, just the complication of Penn Dot right-of-way is that we need a highway architecture. Permit to install the sidewalk within their right-of-way. So that's an added cost and expense for whoever does the project. And, you know, one of the things I want to look at is whether or not we can take an HOP that may have been done for the closed loop project and extend that, modify that, so that it can cover the sidewalk extension. Not sure if that's possible or not, but it's a group we're willing to explore.
Okay. And you did have conversations with the owners of the mall?
Yes, correct, Longview Properties, yes.
Right. They're not offering resistance to it?
No, they're fully supportive of it.
Very good.
While they're not offering resistance, they're also not offering to contribute anything toward it as well. So we still have a logistical issue that we have to address in some type of agreement, if we can get everybody on board to use the twenty thousand dollars for purposes of construction.
And any chance for discussion between now and Monday with them?
Certainly, possibly, I mean, anything's possible. We could certainly discuss it with them, and see if there's any more leeway in what they're offering.
Okay.
Certainly, there won't be anything in writing, but continue a dialogue.
All right, great. Any other discussion on this?
So we have to take action on this Monday.
Yeah, we're out of time.
So, right, so we're going into this blindfolded, it's twenty thousand dollars, this project's going to end up costing probably fifty thousand dollars, the way things work in government. So we're going to have to shell out money, the borough.
Well, I can't say the borough is, I mean, if there's grant funds out there, we can certainly tap into those. But right now, we have twenty thousand dollars toward the project. I would agree with you, most likely, it'll be more than that, if we have to pay prevailing wage, and if we need to get a Penn Dot HOP. So there's no sugar coating that, but at least we have a fund to start, so that's where we are.
Yeah, I think the goal would be to monitor any development activity in that area, and see if another development comes in, and we could get, you know, offer them the twenty thousand dollars if they complete that project under their work, which would avoid the need for us to take it through.
Or if Longview could have it done at lower cost.
Correct. Yeah, they might have a contractor that can do it for a better price, so.
Okay, we'll list this for Monday. Thirteen, Colbert Dale Railroad. This is the subdivision annexation?
Yes, if council recalls, at least the council that was here last fall, council had actually approved two things with respect to the Colbert Dale Railroad at their request. One was to formally vote to waive the land development process for the station that they intend to build. The second thing that council approved, at least conceptually, was a land swap to exchange property, so that a portion of the park could be used for the station, and the borough would get a portion of the Colbert Dale Railroad property for purposes of their trail system. So we're still working on the actual documents with respect to the agreement, but one other item naturally has come up. In the event of a land swap, we're going to need to create some type of minor subdivision to create parcels that will then be annexed to each person, each entity's ownership interest. So we're getting, having engineering done, or actually, the railroad's having engineering done, and they had made a request to us. They realize they have to go through a minor subdivision in order to create the parcels to annex to the existing parcels, but they were hoping not to have to go through the planning commission, since essentially, there's really not a whole lot of planning going on here. It's more technical in nature, and it's really just engineering. So they had made that request. We didn't think that was part of council's original approval, when you had made the decision back in the fall. So given their short timeframe, and you'll see the subdivision plan when it's ready to be approved, but they're just asking to maybe save thirty to sixty days and avoid going to the planning commission, and basically just come right to council. So that's the request before council for Monday night, if you're inclined to consider it.
Okay, if there are no objections, we should list this for Monday evening. Fourteen is zoning, the Hancock Building, six twenty-five North Charlotte Street.
Yeah, I'll take this one, yeah, Mr. Wean, sorry. We have received an application that was submitted to the zoning hearing board for the professional building on Charlotte Street. Essentially, it appears from the application, and again, we only have what was submitted. They are seeking to put an electronic sign with changeable messages at the property, six twenty-five North Charlotte Street. Technically, while the borough does permit electronic signs, in some districts, it doesn't permit them in the traditional town neighborhood districts. So they're seeking permission to put an electronic sign in that location. Under the borough ordinance, the maximum size of a sign in the district would be twenty-four square feet. They're proposing a sign to be thirty-three point eight square feet. And lastly, the maximum height that they would be permitted is seventy-two inches. The sign they're proposing is eighty-four inches. So they're asking for really three separate variances. One is to place the sign in the district, two, to make it larger than it would otherwise be permitted, and three, make it, I guess, a foot higher than will be permitted in the district. So I think a hearing's been scheduled before the zoning hearing board on the twenty-first of February. Council has basically three options. You can do nothing and let the zoning hearing board hear the case and make a decision. You can take action to oppose the request, or you could take action to support the request. And typically, we defer to the ward counselor, and who would that be?
Mr. Arms.
Mr. Arms.
Yeah, so I reached out to some residents out on Charlotte Street, and they were definitely opposed to the electronic sign. And part of it is, there's a lot of concern about speeding there. I mean, we've done speed studies and found that there's no real issue, but at the same time, it's right on that corner on Charlotte Street. So it does pose a bit of a distraction, and in addition, they think the aesthetic of it, you know, is not positive for their neighborhood. So I would like to make a motion on Monday to oppose, based on the electronic message board.
Any other comments? Okay, listed.
I have one thing. Now, we also have Manor Care that's there, and some other businesses, and since it is somewhat of a neighborhood, if we let one business start, it just might, you know, go on, and there'll be more that'll run the size. So maybe, you know, it's something to consider not doing. So maybe, you know, it's something to sort of not doing.
Okay.
Well, I might, I might suggest, Mr. Arms, that for purposes of Monday, and you did indicate that your prime objection was to the form of the sign being electronic message. Certainly, council has the ability to oppose portions of relief. I don't know what the neighborhood or what you believe, uh, whether the size or the height is inappropriate based upon what they want to do. But you can segment your request for opposition if you desire to do that. And then you can, uh, will obviously express to the zoning hearing board what, what council objection is to the zoning. So that's, uh, that you can do that in different parts.
Acceptable? Okay. Fifteen, lawn and right-of-way meat inch bids.
All right, we've received, um, three bids. Uh, these were, um, opened on February sixth, twenty eighteen. We had, uh, one, um, one firm that withdrew their bid, uh, from the group, so now we're down to, uh, two bids. So Public Works will plan to have a recommendation for a vendor to select on Monday.
Okay, very good. Can we do that? Park regulation amendment.
Oh, Mike. Sure, sure. So the ordinances governing the park are a little bit overdue to be looked at and amended. There were some things missing, um, and in the course of adding those, just wanted to take an opportunity to clean up, uh, some error and also make some suggested changes. So you should have, uh, a document with these changes put together. So again, they run the gamut from, uh, something completely new, uh, to something that needs to be refined, to just some corrections. So running through them, um, quickly, uh, be looking at change of the Bark Park from limited purpose park to a limited access park. In reality, the, the access to the park is limited. It's based on a membership model. Likewise with Manatoni Green, uh, Manatoni Green being added to the, uh, inventory, and it is a limited access park. That is, you cannot get in there all of the times. Moving on, I, I don't want to take too long with this because you have the opportunity to, to look through this. And then I would open it more to your questions as opposed to just me, um, saying everything that's here. Let's see. Uh, the primary one was looking at, uh, the operation of the parks. That is, when they're open and when they're closed. It was not clearly defined previously, so that is the big one that we looked at. And that is under, um, ordinance one oh-two, part F, time and hours of use. No person shall be permitted on park property, uh, between sunset and sunrise. And then we said what that means. It says designated by National Weather Service Resources. So that would be one of the big ones, uh, to look at. The other one was, we were a little prescriptive about what we wanted or didn't want in some of the parks, and that's not really necessary. There's, there's some, uh, pieces in there that say you can't have a ball or a frisbee in, uh, South Street Park, for example. That's a little counterintuitive. So what we really wanted to do was look at the intentionality of something like that. I can't guess what the intentionality is, but really what it seems to be about, to me, is about safety in the playground. What we're really talking about is, is we don't want those things crossing the path of playground use, uh, especially if we have younger kids, equipment for ages two to five. So we're suggesting the ordinance say that there's a, uh, limit to the area around. You have to have a buffer outside of that playground area for those activities. We cleaned up some of the language with respect to, uh, animals and liability for animals in the park, keeping leash ordinances clear and, uh, making it clear about cleaning up after, uh, animals with respect to animal waste. Suggesting taking out the special regulations for certain parks under ordinance one oh-five. That's where you get to the, due to the limitations of, and then there's a list of parks that they say they don't want balls, except for this type of ball or that type of ball. Again, suggesting that's a little too prescriptive. What we really want to do is just say that these things should happen outside of the playground area, and that's a best practice for safety in the playgrounds. Also wanted to clean up some of the language with respect to the spray park. You'll see that further on, uh, saying that there are no glass containers permitted within, uh, twenty feet of the splash pad. This is a hazard. By making this an ordinance, this is enforceable, um, and we can make sure that that park is safe for everybody who's using it. The other big addition there is, uh, the statement that all youth using facilities ages thirteen and under must be under direct supervision of adults. It's not a suggestion. We'd like to make this clear. There needs to be an adult watching the activities there. Let's see. And likewise with, uh, the skate park, uh, defining the perimeter of the skate park for the same purposes, keeping those hazardous items outside of there. The big one that we wanted added is, um, use of tobacco products and vapor-producing products is prohibited in all playground areas for the purpose of the subsection. Playground areas are defined as the area within the perimeter of the tested attenuated safety surfacing installed beneath play equipment. Again, this is another, uh, industry standard. We really, there's a movement called Young Lungs at Play. The intention is to, to keep, uh, tobacco products out of these areas and out of, uh, secondhand smoke, um, damaging youth playing on these playgrounds. That's the Reader's Digest version of, of the changes we're looking for. Again, primarily looking at, um, changing the, some of the language with limiting things and, um, cleaning up, uh, keeping no smoking in the park. So I would open it to any questions on particular changes presented there.
I just have, uh, two, one comment and one question. Who's responsible for enforcing, um, the regulations?
So at the end of the day, that, that falls to the police if it's an ordinance. So, um, it, it is problematic because, I mean, the police are not going to be standing presumably at the playground looking for these type of things. If we see a pattern of, of misbehavior related to these, these are the kind of things we can bring to the attention of the police, and they can be addressed accordingly. So, um, there is always a problem of, of enforcement because it needs to be observed. But the police are the best to, uh, enforce any ordinance really in this case.
Um, and my other comment was, is it possible we could add some, uh, language in there? Uh, something along the lines of, uh, including no distribution of food, clothing, et cetera, in borough parks? It's come to my attention that that seems to be a problem in certain areas.
I would say that that's something that, that needs to be looked at. I would say that, that the solicitor needs to, to look at those ideas. Really, the idea would not to be prescriptive too much about what we can and can't do in a way that limits normal usage, but rather, we want to have something that directs usage. So, yes, I think that there's a language that can come, that can be instituted to that effect, um, in the ordinances that would just put it onto the department. So if the department is aware of, of these type of organized uses, um, we can plan accordingly. Does that make sense? Or does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, I mean, really, the, the point is, it, it costs a lot of money for Chuck to, to do these ordinances. So if we're looking at this one, I'm just trying to make it cost-effective. It is, that's really where I'm going. Because, uh, whether we add it to the parks or not, I'm going to push for it in, in another way. So I'm just trying to make some business sense of it.
And I'll answer your question. It's already been looked at and directed to me, so I will add some language when it's ready to adopt, so we don't have to do it twice. But it's not in this draft here.
So, answer that, that something was put on his desk. That is a beginning, but when it comes to the nitty-gritty of it, we want to make sure that it's not, um, neither unenforceable nor too, again, too prescriptive.
Okay.
Thank you.
So council's duty is to authorize to advertise this. We'll list it for Monday.
Wait, but, wait a minute. We're advertising, I?
If you can authorize the advertisement, I won't advertise until I share with you the additional language. So at least it gets it going. So you'll, you'll see the additional language. That's okay. You certainly don't have to, to pull the trigger that fast, but that will be the next step.
Okay. Seventeen is Monco twenty forty resolution.
Okay, this is a, a resolution, um, to help fund, uh, a portion of the walk-bike construction where it would connect to the School River Trail. Both, again, as I mentioned earlier, both Montgomery County, um, projects, being the School River Trail and Monco twenty forty grant coming through the county. We'd be seeking a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, um, from the county for, for this, uh, project. And, um, uh, there'd be a match of twenty-seven thousand dollars, which would, um, already be taken care of through the funding we received for the main part of the walk-bike Pottstown project. So no, uh, financial outlay to the borough as part of the school.
I would like to say anything?
Uh, yeah, we just need a resolution to be adopted.
All right. Okay, we'll add that. Eighteen, non-uniform pension annual report.
Janice and Ruby, we're going to discuss that.
Yeah, yours.
So you have it in your packet. The ordinance for the non-uniform pension requires that there be some kind of reporting to the council, um, at the beginning of the year. So there's about, I want to say, six to eight different accounts that are investment accounts. And what I focused on was the receipts and, uh, disbursements account.
Right.
Capsulated, so that's what's in your packet, to give a feel of what transpires during the year. So were there any questions? No?
No questions? Okay, how about board appointments? We have a vacancy in the Civil Service Commission. Any applicants?
No applicants.
How about Construction Code Board of Appeals?
No applicants.
Okay, and Harb, one vacancy to expire April first.
Uh, Mr. Mark Harvey applied.
Okay. All right, we'll go forward with those. Human Relations Commission. A, uh, one vacant term?
No applicants.
No applicant. And, uh, Planning Commission?
Jim Durs requesting, uh, reappointment.
Very good. And Padita, two, five-year terms.
Uh, no applicants that we've received.
At the moment, I'm in discussion with several, so by next month, we'll have these.
You'll have them next month. Okay. Very good. Any comments from citizens present?
All right, Sheila Jiggin?
Um, I just wanted to take a minute to thank Mike and all the firemen who came to my next-door neighbor's house that was attached to mine yesterday, um, and had a fire from a contractor. They were very quick. My three children were at home. It was very scary to me. I was able to get there quickly too, but they were great. The police officers were great. They made sure my kids were safe, um, and they got the fire out very quickly. So I just wanted to thank everybody that was there for that.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thanks. That's all. Okay, councilors, general discussion. Counselor Kirkland. Anything? Okay. Counselor Paez? Counselor Arms? Counselor Proscal? Vice President Co.
Congratulations, congratulations to the Eagles.
Counselor Lebenitsky? Nothing? Here.
I did have one thing I forgot. I'm sorry, I'm trying to load it. I wanted to say thank you to all of the residents in Pottstown and surrounding areas for helping. There's a gentleman by the name of Ed. He's also, um, known as Walmart Ed, who has been, um, sleeping in the parking lot of Walmart in his van for quite some time. He's, uh, in his forties, lost his job. In the cold, uh, days of January, residents reached out to him, raised money for him to have a hotel, towed his vehicle to a safe place. When he had some health problems, they got him admitted to Genesis. They've been visiting him every day. And they, I'm trying to, it's on my Facebook page, the, um, I think it was ABC or, uh, did a story on, um, Ed and the, it, the, I'm sorry, the link is Help Ed Stay Warm in a Bed. So a couple people have put this on, um, a GoFundMe page and have raised enough money for him to get a first, last, and, um, security deposit for an apartment in Pottstown. So I just wanted to thank everyone for working together to help Ed.
Uh, important. Number one, I, I do want to thank the Financial Sustainability Oversight Committee. I, I know it was tough work for three or four weeks. And, uh, it's some great outcomes. The people there were very good at what they were doing, even those that never worked with the borough. But they, they certainly had the insight to, uh, provide some guidance for the future. And I also want to thank our own finance department here. Janice and her team, uh, with their diligence and working with the rest of staff, made it very difficult for the Oversight Committee to find anything easy to make changes, which means everybody's been doing their job, and I thank you all. Uh, we will be going to an executive session. We will not be returning, and we'll see you Monday evening. Uh, oh, uh, the issue is personnel for the executive. That being it, meeting adjourned.
Could I make a, a statement? I noticed tonight on our, my way down that the salt trucks were out, salt in the roads for tomorrow, because it might be pretty ugly, so.
Okay, meeting adjourned.